Welcome everyone, I'll call the city council to order for the city of West Liberty. And we are here joined with council members present, Tim Friesick, Councilmember Joshua Schultz, and Councilmember Omar Martinez. So, welcome to the meeting. And we have, first item is to approve the agenda, and that is a consent vote. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, thank you.
And second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is approved. Approval of the consent agenda, we have three items on this. And we do them all three together. All three of them together, so we have the council, city council meeting minutes from November 5th, and also the special city council meeting minutes of December 11th, and also the November sewer report. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is approved. Next order of business is the long awaited oath of office for the mayor of West Liberty. Gary. Yes, that would be good.
Alright, I, Mark Smith.
I, Mark Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all my duties as mayor.
Discharge all my duties as mayor.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and/or hereafter required by law. Now, we swear in a couple of council members. Actually, I think you were up first. And raise your right hand. I, Joshua Schultz.
I, Dr. Letho.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all my duties as council member for the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
Discharge all my duties as council member for the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Excellent. Oh. Please raise your right hand. I, Tim Friesick.
I, Tim Friesick.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all my duties as council member.
Discharge all my duties as council member.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Page one, it's completed.
We still, mayor.
Yes.
We still have the mayoral witness of yours which you.
Yes. I see on page two, something on page one.
Yours might be, are you looking at yours, the one I made for you?
Yeah. So, I'm very happy to appoint Joshua Hauser as chief of police for the city of Western Liberty. And we interviewed a number of candidates for this position. We had excellent candidates. We're very happy that Joshua has decided to come back to work for the city of West Liberty and to assume these duties. So, tonight, we will swear him in as mayor, assuming that, I think we have the approval of the council first. So, we need approval of the council before we do that. So, that, I would entertain a motion to, this would be resolution 20231219 hyphen 111. A resolution approving the chief of police appointment and the appointment agreement with the new chief of police. This is a roll call vote. Motion has been made to approve. And it has been seconded. The clerk will call the roll.
Great, Friesick?
Aye.
Phil?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes. Thank you. So, the resolution has been approved, and so now we have the opportunity to swear in our new chief of police. So, please raise your right hand. I, Joshua Hauser.
I, Dr. Hauser.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all my duties as chief of police.
Discharge all my duties as chief of police.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
And now or hereafter required, as now or hereafter required by law.
Now or hereafter required by law.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, mayor, if you wanna just run off a few minutes for Chief Hauser and his family to take pictures.
Yes, let's do that. Alright, we're back in session following the photo ops here, and so I'd like for Maria to come up. One of the things that I've wanted to do as mayor is that I think it's very impressive when people do the study and effort to become citizens of the United States. And since we are the first minority majority community in the state of Iowa, this is particularly important to me. So, Jan, a while back contacted me and asked me if I would do some tutoring with someone who was studying for a citizenship. And so, I had that opportunity with Maria Guadalupe Moheca Campos. And then, on December 8th, I had the opportunity to travel to Des Moines and to see the first ceremony that I've ever seen that people are taking their citizenship. It is a moving experience to see folks there, their families, with the great sense of pride that they have in becoming citizens of the United States. So, all of us on the council and in the community, as we know of folks that are receiving their citizenship, I want you to let us know, and I want this to be part of how we open our council meetings in welcoming our new citizens. So, please join in welcoming Maria in the United States. Didn't think you'd like to say.
Alright, everything, Jen, thank you all.
And Maria's here with her son Oscar.
Yeah. Where would you like?
Oh, yes. To put my pen away. Oscar's not coming up.
You'd like to get a picture?
Somebody will take it for you. Alright, next on the agenda are the reports. And Leo, you are first.
Yeah, mayor, thank you. Mayor, first thing I'd like to do is, we're gonna talk a little bit about Naughty Circle as well as Rainbow. When the pay assets, the water plant is moving along, not as quickly as we wanted to. The parts are a little bit delayed, but it is still moving pretty well. And the ripping project is getting ready to kick off. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Alright, city staff reports. I have water down. Anything on water? We have it, then it's flowing. The WWTP.
Waste water treatment.
Well, thank you. Do we have a YA report on wastewater treatment? Hearing none, again, we'll hope that's going well. Library.
So, Mr. Mayor, these reports are in your packets.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So, just as you said, the water is flowing, and the good news is that the wastewater treatment plant, it's flowing correctly there as well, which is very important. They've been doing some cleaning, and this time of the year, we all remember, the UV unit has to be drained and discharged due to the colder months, which usually utilize, Leo, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's utilized during the warmer months for treatments. So, there's continued to be work on the TerraCon, there's some boring work, so they can do soil sampling towards upcoming projects. And then, our library director is present, and her report is in the agenda as well. If she would like to add anything to that report.
I did, after sending that, realized I didn't update my building and technology section. We have our new phone books, which are funded by the Rachel Justice Grant, from the Muscatine Community Foundation, up and ready for people to use. But we received, or we purchased fifteen of them, five of them are going upstairs, five are downstairs, and then five are being reserved for programming, like for our English language programming classes that we're using, having downstairs. We did also purchase some headphones. The new headphones were upstairs, so they are adult size instead of children's size. And then also microphones for the use with our Resonance phone program, and for the gaming computers, which are hopefully gonna cut down on the amount of kids on speaker phones with their friends if they're playing Fortnite. We have been having our usual shenanigans, so from this time of year is a hard time between Thanksgiving and Christmas for kids, so very confusing. It's a confusing time for their gearing up from one holiday to another holiday, so things get a little rowdy at the library. This year, we've been having issues with the fifth graders fighting on the lawn. I will be in touch with the police chief to discuss the patrolling on Wednesdays. That's gonna be our busiest day in the library, and so having just somebody walking by to remind them that they're not isolated in a bathroom is useful. And that's pretty much all I've got added to what was already.
And in addition to the library director's report, I had the opportunity to meet, and we went over comparing for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We've had employee discussions and IT discussions and building discussion, and so I appreciate that conversation. And that looks like that concludes our reports.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from city council members? At least with just being one shot for the morning?
It is for all ages, technically geared towards our youth for the after-school early-out program. But there is a, it's a, to make gifts for, to give. Last minute.
I mean, tomorrow's also the Shop With The Cop, so.
Next on the agenda is the beer and liquor license. This is for from a market. And it is a Class E retail alcohol license expiration of twelve thirty-one of twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving this liquor license, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is carried. Next up are vendor voucher claims. Do we have a motion to approve the claims in the amount of five hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred forty-five and eighty-one cents? Thank you, John, our council member, and thank you, council members. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is carried. Now, we're at the time for public comments and or correspondence. This is a time set aside on the agenda for the public to talk on topics of city business other than those listed in the agenda. And we limit people to five minutes for their discussion, to two minutes for their discussion. Is there anyone who would like to talk the two minutes on a subject? Not only Jen. I'll ask again, just to make sure. Are there anyone that would like to talk on a issue for up to two minutes? That's not on the agenda. Hearing none, we'll proceed then with the rest of the agenda. New business. First item is discussion and appropriate vote. Oh, yes. Where are my manners?
It's okay, you're mayor in train.
Alright, so, council member Schultz says.
Yes, I've had, I had somebody over on Naughty Circle just looking into when lights would be up and running over there as it's getting darker, and had some concerns for their parents living over there. Reached out to manager Gertz, and I know she worked with that, and actually was contacted by Diana Brown, just thinking, saying that they're up and going, and all of a sudden, she was happy with the quickness of it all getting put to care of.
We never noticed how dark it is until we don't have lights. It's like that. Well, thank you, Leo, too. That leaving that quickly too, so.
That's all. How about the other two?
I would just, as city manager, I would just like to thank the West Liberty Fire EMS department volunteer members. They invited, Chief Sickles invited Kirk Hoferd and I Friday night to their annual awards banquet, and we got to attend that and meet and greet and talk with lots of folks, and they were awesome, very wonderful, recognized us both for our work that we've done, and we got to participate in funds. And we didn't do so well on the Santa Claus trivia, so I'm gonna have to study. If I get invited again, I'm prepared. But we would like to say thank you for inviting us to be a part of their special night.
Great.
Well, tomorrow is Shop With The Cop, so the West Liberty Police Department has everyone organized, and thank you to the city staff. And the administrative office will be closing at eleven AM to support the event. So, they have a number of students that will be going with them to Edelweiss Muscatine. They will do their shopping there, then they will come back to the community center for some pizza and some refreshments, and then wrap. I don't know, Kirk Hoferd would like to give you an example of, she was pre-wrapping before the meeting. Like, probably not. So, anyway, they'll be back to wrapping up their gifts and right here before the holidays, so. After the meeting, so. I'll do that.
City clerk.
I do not have anything with this time.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no, no good.
And do we call on Brittany or anyone else? No, that's, that's it, okay. Alright, new business, discussion and appropriate action of the city council on the Economic Development Grant application for PBB Properties LLC at one hundred and ten North Columbus Street in West Liberty. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I could welcome Ken Brett, the Wee Wee Director. Would he mind providing some history and some information on the matching grants? And then we can allow the council to move on the action.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. Please bring this grant application forward for you this evening. Should you approve this matching grant? We have a local property owner that is wanting to develop the second half of the property that was developed about two years ago. If you're familiar with the auto parts store, like just here in town, that's in one half of the building, second half of the building is sitting vacant, and needs some pretty significant remodeling, make it available for commercial use. The exciting news is, once that update is done, they have a business, brand-new business for us, that is ready to move into it, but they're unable to do so without this grant assistance.
Thank you, Ken. And with that, my recommendation to city council would be to approve the matching grant along with Wee Wee as well as recognition.
I think we've ready more motion there.
Is there any questions before we move to motion? Go ahead and do your motion, your second, and then I can follow up with Ken, and I can answer any question.
Gives her a motion to include this grant application. Motion to approve. And the motion to second. All those in favor, this is the roll call, so the clerk will call the roll. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just wanna clarify if there are any questions, because I want to respect the way I know council member Friesick is new, as you are too, mayor. Just quickly, I'll give you an update. The matching grant was organized in twenty-twenty. It will, it does allow the city to levy taxing permit finance dollars, and it's created the matching grant program where local businesses in the business district or the property owners in the downtown area have an opportunity to apply for up to twenty-five thousand dollars as a matching grant to their, for their properties for expansion, remodel, updates. And so, with that said, this would be, I think this is our. Remind me again.
This will be the second for this.
Yes. So, sometimes they cross over in years, and then, yes. So, this would be our second application for that matching grant purpose. Do you have any other questions?
Are we gonna add to the parts store? Separate business, like.
And that's what I'm asking too, and looking at some of the pictures provided. I know the auto parts store, is this to the right as you're looking at it?
Yes, if you're on Columbus and looking at the building, we're gonna sell it.
I think there's a business for each thing.
Any other questions?
I don't have any in this time. I didn't realize it was like sitting empty, but it could sound, it sounds like a step in the right.
Alright, no other questions? And I don't see that this is roll call, is this a consent?
That is a consent.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this grant application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it, the motion is carried. Next up is resolution two zero two three one two one nine hyphen one one two. A resolution reaffirming and ratifying the actions of the city council and former mayor of the city of West Liberty from November seventh to twenty-three through December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. This is because of a oops that we know that all of the information was submitted appropriately on the election to the election officials. But when a mayor is appointed and council members are appointed, once the election is certified, they are to take office. So, this resolution then brings into compliance the actions of the city council between that time period. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Moved by Representative or Councilmember Martinez. And seconded, is there further discussion questions on this action? Well, two of the three council members will be voting on this, which were affected by this. So, please signify those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. Ah, I'm sorry, the clerk.
Your agenda.
Yes, that's okay. The clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Friesick?
Yes.
Motion.
Alright, next step is resolution two thousand twenty-three one two one nine hyphen one one three. A resolution to approve EE number nine from All American Concrete Company for the. for the Rainbow Max Sun Street project in West Liberty. Been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just have invite city engineer Leo Foley to go through the pay estimate with you.
I suspicion that.
So this is, this, this is a pay estimate for $102,624.90. It brings them to about 75%. I drove by tonight and the trail is essentially done as far as the concrete, the lighting. And we talked about lighting on nodding, but lighting is not up. They, they should be getting those light trails up in the next couple of weeks. They will not be able to get a controller until spring. We knew that when we approved. You won't see lighting for a while, but you should see the fills up and then they should be doing what we're calling a dormant scene. And that's really all that's left to do. Project's starting very well. I recommend approval.
There any further discussion? The clerk will call the roll.
Martina?
Yes.
Freezick?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next step is Resolution 20231219-114, a resolution to approve PE number three for All American Concrete for the Naughty Circle Division Street project in West Liberty. Is there a motion to approve this? Moved by council member Martinez, executed by council member Schultz.
Mr. Mayor, I would again invite city engineer Leo Foley to bring you up to date on this project.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so the naughty project has been, I feel like a naughty project, has had some difficult pieces along the way. We ran into bad soils. We have run into water services getting hit. The electrical line got hit. All has been repaired. They still, still have just a little bit of work, cleanup type of work to do. Should, shouldn't be a problem getting finished. They will have another pay estimate. This pay estimate was primarily B and K and All American went back and forth on Dante Tease and I would. We had to go back on the last one and re-measure and make sure everybody's on the same page as far as the cost. We do recommend a payment for $4,052.00.
Are there additional questions? Seeing them, the clerk will call the roll.
Freezick?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 231290-115, a resolution to approve the construction engineering services agreement for the Powerhouse Re Roofing Project. Is there a motion to approve? It has been moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, I would again, by the city engineer Leo Foley.
This is a contract for Dean's Program Kim, and we did not do the design or any of the roof replacement that was done by the, by the electrical engineering group for the power, for the, for the West Liberty's power. However, we do have people that are on site, we have construction people, and I think it's just an efficient way for us to make sure that the City of West Liberty gets the product they want, for in the wood. The intent of the roofing company is to do the part that's over the well in the office this year, yet if they can get it in there and then do the rest of it in.
So, Mr. Mayor, as city engineer has communicated, BHMG, they took the lead on locating a contractor, putting the bids out for a contractor specific to the powerhouse. And as a city engineer has indicated around what they call the doghouse for, was considered to be kind of complicated, because there needs to be a hatch available for well number two. Along with that, the roof has not been updated for some period of time. So with all of that said, it was BHMG's recommendation as well of DC Taylor. And it has come to our attention that the contractor does work with the library building as well. So they are a familiar contractor that's already working and approved.
Have any further questions? The clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Freezick?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, it appears that everyone has survived the first regular city council meeting. So last thing, I will say again, thank you to Mayor Anderson. He has been wonderfully cooperative and helpful as we go through this transition. Those are a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the ayes, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas every week.